Hey, my name is Shreeda Cadenhead. I am, I am a resident of Fairfield, Alabama. And today we are going to be having a conversation with District Five Council Candidate, Phyllis Oden Jones. She is running to fill the seat that's to be vacated by Herman Carnes, who is running for Council President. Joining me today are several of my neighbors. And I asked them to join me today because they were very instrumental in trying to, trying to help us find a candidate that we can have confidence in. They could sit in that seat because Herman has done such a great job on that seat. We wanted somebody who can, who we had confidence in. Now, my, I'm calling this interview. And so I made an interchange between interview and a conversation. But my interview style is rather casual. Personally, I don't prepare questions because it comes across as not being authentic. I let my questions be drawn from the conversation. And you may see me taking notes because someone may ask, may ask a question and it may be answered and then I might feed off of it. Okay? I have asked the guest here to have some questions prepared if they want. They also had the option of sending the questions to me in case they were not able to make it and wanted me to ask those questions. So that's how we're gonna go. So we're asking this be distraction free. We want our audio to be clear. If it is not clear, this probably will not be posted on YouTube or Facebook because we want to have as pristine as we, as we can get. This is not anything that has been sanctioned by the city of Fairfield. It has not been sanctioned by Jefferson County, you know, whatever office that handles voting and voter registration. Although we are members of a neighborhood association, this is not a neighborhood association discussion. This is just individuals that want to have a chat with our, with our, with our candidate. Am I right?
That's right.
All right, that's right. Okay, so um, if you have any, again, if we have any interference, we will ask you to mute your microphone. And so we're gonna go ahead and get started. So I want to, you know, I have Phyllis's bio ready to go ahead and read it. But we're gonna do it like this. So we're gonna ask Phyllis Oden Jones to introduce herself and tell us a little bit about her. Not going into detail at this time about platform running. We just want to tell us about her. Phyllis?
Okay, hi, I'm Phyllis Oden Jones. And I do live in Fairfield, District Five. I have worked for the Birmingham Police Department for 30 years. I've worked as a officer and supervisor, then I worked in investigation. Um, I, I'm married with two sons and we have four grandkids. So my desire is just to do something for the city. My heart is really hurting. So as I said, I just have this strong desire to work for the city of Fairfield after working for the city of Birmingham for 30 years and bringing that experience that I have with the city as a police officer, as a supervisor and investigator. I want to bring it to Fairfield. I live and I love Fairfield. And this is where my heart is. And I just know that with the things that I did in Birmingham, I could do it in Fairfield. And that's why I'm running.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and I want to say that Phyllis is running on a platform of desire that she pointed out to me very clearly. You gotta start with desire. You gotta start with, you have to start with that desire in order to be able to help. I, I do want to say one of the things, you know, for me, a big thing for me comes from you being on to the police department. And I know being a police officer, that you come in contact with a lot of situations that cause for you to have to calm situations down. You have to be able to negotiate with people who are not always rational. And for me personally, because the council and the mayor have to work together, I saw that as a benefit. So can you tell me how your negotiating skills can work for us on the council?
Yes, as you stated, as a police officer, you're always trying to, when you go into a situation, you have to kind of, you know, you don't take sides. Number one, you just go in and you listen to both parties. You listen to everybody and then you kind of assess the situation. And that's how I would do when, when working with the city council. You just have, and you don't agree to everything someone is saying. You just take into account what they're saying. And then you kind of like, try to figure out, you know, you, everybody's not gonna tell you the truth. So you just kind of, you just get there, you listen to both sides and just kind of figure out something they're leaving. Because they're always leaving something out. These people tell you to have truth. So, and, and, and working with people, you have to realize that they're not gonna tell you the whole story. So you just have to kind of figure out, okay, well, something is missing. So that's what an investigation skills to me come in or kick in. That you, you just have to kind of get to the root of the problem. What's the issue? What's the problem? Why this is not working? Why you can't work together? Why you can't live together? You just kind of figure it out, you know, in your mind. As a police officer, you just learn, those skills just kind of kick in. After working out for 30 years, you just kind of, you know, and I do that. I find myself doing it at home. I do it with my friends. I was like, goodness, something is missing, you know? And they always tell me, you have to leave your police skills at, you know, at work. And my mommy's always said, leave them outside the door. But it's just something that you just continue to have. Once you have it, you have it. You can't let it go. So as a, as a city council person, I know that I'm able to work with anybody and kind of, you know, try to resolve the situation. Because even as a police officer, you go in, you listen to the neighbors and you, you, you know, my, you think about, if this was me, this is important to me. I always think whatever you, whenever you call somebody to a situation, whenever you pick up the phone and say, hey, I got an issue, that's important to you. So your problem is my problem. So it makes, it may be something small to someone else, but it's something big to you because you have an issue with it. So I have to always, I used to always tell the officer, it may be small to you, but it's big to them. So you have to listen to them and then address it. Don't just shone a mouth because that's not fair to them. They didn't call you, and I have a problem.
That's right. I, I, I think we love you already. Okay, so, so, so let's, let's go around here. And I'm not going in any particular order. Deborah, have you got a question that you want to ask?
I do, but would you please let me into the meeting on my iPad? So I can see everybody? And I'll delete from here.
Okay, so you cannot, I don't believe you can be on two devices. So just choose which one you want to be on and get off of the. Okay, so, hello? Okay, so Trinida, let's, let's just start with you while Deborah's getting it together. Go ahead and ask a question, Trinida. You turn your mic on.
Okay. I guess my question is, I'm concerned about the cleanliness of our neighborhood. I'm concerned about the public services as a city, as municipality and working for one. I see the other cities getting all their services for like garbage pickup, you know? If you have a problem, you can call somebody. I need to see that back. I need to see our neighbors, neighborhood getting clean. I need to see our neighbors not throwing out trash and that there's no consequences. We have rules and regulations, but if no one is instituting these rules and rules and regulations, it is no consequences. They're just doing what they want to do. The neighbors just dump their trash. They don't care. Someone don't have garbage service, nothing is done about it. It needs to be something done about it.
Okay, what do you say about that?
And I agree because I, on Sunday, and I was riding around with another, someone else who's campaigning with me. And I said, then this area right here got to be cleaned up. It got to be better. And I noticed that people are dumping stuff out.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to get out, get out of it on my phone. Okay, so I need everybody to mute, everybody to mute. Okay, one moment. Except for Phyllis. Okay, go ahead, Phyllis.
Okay, and as I was stating, I agree with you 100% because I've noticed in one specific area, there's a lot of dumping of trash and I saw mattress, I saw cars on, you know, I just saw a lot of things that need to be corrected. And I think they hadn't, they have not been addressed. I think also that the neighbors, along with myself as a city council, would have to get involved. Because it just can't be just one person who's trying to solve the issue. You know, it has to be a group effort. So with the neighbors, and, and I, I, and I do realize that everybody, everybody don't have police things, you know, because I'll call on my neighbor. If my neighbor's doing something, I was, listen, I was the first one to call. Because it's not like, I guess, and, and I have to think about, that's the police in me. But everybody's not gonna react the same way. People don't want to tell only neighbors. When you see them throwing trash out, that's your responsibility is to report it. Don't think that something bad is gonna happen to you because I told that my neighbors was throwing through their mattress at the, you know, at the door. That's nothing to be afraid to report. Report it. I had an issue with my neighbor. They was, they was racing up and down the streets. And I couldn't believe that they was, I mean, it was about 50 cars out here. But I was the first one to call. And I asked the other neighbors, you know, do y'all know this going on? Or, you know, have this ever, they say, yeah, this happened all the time. I was like, oh my goodness, you know, no one ever calls the police and let them know what's going on. So with public service, we all have to get involved. It can't be just one person. You see, you see people throwing trash out, you need to report it. Public service, the public garbage pickup, I think that, and I, and I've really been thinking about this because it, we want to say that it's the, I don't know whether it's the council people who, who came up with the contract, because they do have a contract. So you really need to look at the contract. Because they kind, the, the garbage pickup contract could read, they only pick up A, B, and C. But we expect for them to pick up A, B, C, and D. But that, that, that may not be in that contract. So I, before I really elaborate on the garbage pickup, I need to look at the contract. Because, you know, that's just like telling someone to go in there, clean it, go sweep the kitchen. But, you know, they need to wash the dishes. But they didn't wash the dishes because you didn't tell me to do that. You know what I'm saying? So sometimes you have to go back to the table and say, I need you guys to do this, A, B, C, and D.
And D, and D.
Right, so not just A, B, and C.
Let me, let me, let me do a follow up question on that regarding the garbage service with Republic. Because as you all know, or you may know, nobody has been willing to pick up the trash for us in Fairfield because of our financial situation. The last time it was time for the contract renewal, I believe there was another company that was willing to do it. But this was somebody I believe was brand new to the business. You know, I don't know if they had all the licensing required. I don't know if they were, you know, had permits to dump in the landfill or whether you even had the equipment. So I understand what you're saying about the contract. But, you know, what about the issue of nobody being willing at this point to pick up trash in our, in our city because of the financial condition, condition that we've been in?
You know, they say that it's a, people not, they don't want to do a contract with Birmingham, I mean, with Fairfield because of the financial situation. But the problem I have with that is that, and like I said, I don't know all the details. But what I'm looking at is that the people pays the Republic. Is that not right? I mean, the people pays. So what part of it will Fairfield, is Fairfield paying a certain amount for garbage pickup? That's, that's the issue I'm having right now because I really don't know. But I'm looking at, if the people are paying, then why are they looking at the fact that we're having financial problems? Because it's each individual household is paying.
Well, I think, I think, and I, and I don't know, but I think that Fairfield negotiates the contract on our behalf. Okay, that's just what I think. So I'm not speaking as any kind of authority. I, I just, my recollection, I believe that, that's what I've heard. Yeah.
And I don't really agree with the, well, because I've talked to other people in other municipalities and they pay less than we pay. And they get picked up twice a week. And I don't understand that. That's why I say, you know, we have to go back to the table and, you know, let's look at this contract because something is not getting done. Why are we paying $75 and, well, $74 and some change? And I'm just gonna say, and the next municipality, they pay $60. And they get, you know, they're getting two pickup.
That's true. That's very true.
What, you know, that's why I say, you know, you have to look at and see, well, what did y'all agree on? Did y'all agree to A, B, and C and not D, you know? And why are we paying more when this, when this municipality right next door to us is only paying, you know, only paying this amount and getting more service? You know, why? And I don't understand. And I'm like, you know, we all should be paying the same thing and getting the same service.
It's like we're being taken advantage of, isn't it?
It is. We are being taken advantage of. And we paying more and getting less, and getting less done. So why? Why is this going on? That's why I say you have to go back and look at the contract and see why? You know, what, how do they write the contract up? And a lot of times, some contracts are written up and people really don't know what they're getting, you know, what are they saying? Because people will take advantage of you. And they could have been taken advantage of because of the fact, no, and you know, it's not like David, David, when Republic made a contract with, with Fairfield, they knew nobody else made an offer because people talk.
That's correct, that's correct. We're gonna, we're gonna roll on and let Deborah try to come back and answer her questions. Deborah, I'm gonna unmute you and see if we can get rid of that, that static.
Okay.
Okay, all right, I can hear you. What's your question?
My question is, Ms. Phyllis?
Yes.
What, what is your agenda for, if you're duly elected, your first day? On your first day, what are your plans for the city of Fairfield?
Okay, my first day is to identify the issues, the situations, what's going on in Fairfield. That's what I want, I want to identify them. Put them in order, you know, from, you know, from the, the most important to the least. I want to identify what is really going on in Fairfield. Why are we having so many problems? I think, I want to be on the front line. I want to know, you know? And I've been asked some questions, haven't been getting answered. So my thing now is, I want to know, I want to sit here at the table and I want to know, why is this business going, you know, going away? Why are we not getting garbage picked up twice? I want to know things, you know, my concerns and then also the concerns of my constituents. I want to know why things haven't been getting done. So my first day is, I need to identify some of these problems. I need to know what is really going on. And then, and I'm more of a documentation person, so I'm gonna be writing, you know? Well, why are we only getting one pickup? So why are we having to pay the county this much money and be in the county? I want to know. So my thing, they probably say, wait a minute, you, you asked too many questions. But my thing is that I want to know what you all are doing and why you're doing it this way. Why, why we have so many empty buildings, builders? Why people are not coming? I got all these whys in my head because I want to know. I want to get to the root of, my thing is, I want to get to the root of the problem. And you can't solve the problem until you get to the root. If you don't get to the root, you can't solve. You can't cut a tree at the top and say you wanted to die. You know what I'm saying? You got to stop at the bottom of it and work yourself on up so you can kill the tree. So right now, we need to kill whatever is stopping businesses from leaving or whatever is stopping business from coming in or why we can't progress. We need to kill it. You know, we need to find out why? What are we doing? Or what can we do? What, what can we do better? And that's what it is. How can we work together to grow this city and make it a better place? What can we do together? Not individual. And I always tell people, I'm not looking for a name. I'm not trying to make myself, put myself on a pedestal and all that. That's not, I want to know why we are suffering? Why we not having the service? Why we not getting what we supposed to have here in Fairfield? Why we can't get, Fairfield is a nice place to live. It's, I mean, it's, I've been here all my life. So for me to just continue to stay here, I, I love Fairfield. I love Fairfield. And this is why we want to.
Okay, so you, so you break it up a little bit, Phyllis?
Okay, I'm saying this place should be thriving because it's a nice place to live.
Okay, let's, let's, let's back it up a little bit. So we're talking a little bit about, you know, what you want to do on your first day. And I imagine you have a lot on your list that you want to do.
I do.
And I'm not quite sure that you're gonna get all that down on the first day. You might have to, you might have to ease into it a little bit. Hey, we're right there with you, Phyllis. So, but we, and I don't know what the acclamation process for the council is once you become a new member. Do you know?
I really don't, but I know that, I mean, once you become a new member, and I'm just saying this off the top of my head because, you know, people don't really tell you all the details. But it's just like any other city. If you join a family, you in. It's just like, I mean, I'm new, but I'm in. You know, so I got just as much rights and privilege or say so or vote as the person that been there 20 years. So nobody have seniority, you know? So that's my thought. No one has, we all on the same page, we all working together. And I may have just walked through the door, but you don't have more, no more authority than I do.
That's right, that's, that's right.
That's just the way I look at it.
We got, we're gonna see if Angela, Angela, are you good?
Is that better?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. What's your question?
Okay, well, Phyllis, going back to the garbage pickup, you were saying that the other municipalities are less than Fairfield. And we pay more, but we get less service. And other municipalities pay less and get more service. Okay, do we have the same, I mean, the same company that these other, it's the same company? Okay, okay, well, then that would be interesting as to why there's such a difference in the rate. So I agree that we do need to look at the, at the contract again. And somebody needs to go down to the table and renegotiate the contract again because they're working on behalf of the citizens. And that's why the citizens of Fairfield have such an issue with paying the garbage tax. I mean, yeah, I mean, our city is financially strapped right now. But if that's, I guess that's one of the, of getting some kind of revenue in through the garbage payoff. But if people are not happy with the service and they're not gonna pay it, they're gonna take their garbage to the big dumpsters, you know, at the churches or schools or whatever like that, or be thinking if somebody else is paying. Which certainly, and I'm not sure if the citizens are aware of that because I didn't until you just said it. But I mean, that, that, that would be something that.
We got some background, we got some background noise behind you, Angela. Are you, Phyllis, are you able to address that?
Yes, and, and the reason why I know this, because before we had the forum, the forum, I talked to other people in other municipalities and I, you know, and I wanted to know about their garbage pickup, what the, you know, how much they was paying and how often they was getting garbage picked up. I just wanted to know. So just in case the question came up, which it did. So this is something I know that they're getting picked up twice. And I know they paid less because I was like, what happens to y'all pay? You know, so this is something I know. It's not something that I'm just throwing out there. But like I say, it also depends on how the contract reads. What do we agree to?
All right, okay.
I mean, not we, but you know, what did the city council agree to?
Exactly, exactly. Rodina, if you are there, we're gonna need you on camera to participate in this discussion. So if you can turn your video on, that would be great. Otherwise, you know, we're gonna, you know, everybody's required to show video. Otherwise, maybe you can catch us on the replay. So if you're able to do that, go ahead and do that. I'm going to let Trinida, if you've got another question.
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Back to the price for the garbage. Now, I read just this week on that I'm So Fairfield website, somebody said, I don't know who it was, and I don't know how true it is, that the city of Fairfield gets $10 of our fees. But now my experience with Republic, anytime I've called them, I've had no problem with them. I think it's mostly the neighbors, the ones who won't pay and the ones who want to just dump their trash anywhere. Because I, every time I call, I get a polite person. One day, my, my pickup got missed because my neighbors had blocked my trash can while I was at work. Well, I called and they were out here the next day and picked up my trash. So I think it's mostly the neighbors not paying for it. But we could use two days a week. We paying this much money, $74 and some change every three months. We need more services. We need for them to come and get this trash off the streets, the bulk trash. It definitely needs more than every two weeks. Because the bulk trash sits out there and it looks terrible.
Okay, all right. So, so let me, let me just say this so that we don't get, you know, stuck on repeat, you know, like, like that. So does anybody have any questions, you know, that does not relate to garbage? Because I just really kind of feel, I mean, we're all concerned about that. But there are also other things in the city that we are concerned about. And Trinida, while I have your mic off, is there anything besides the garbage that you think you might want to address?
Just all of the city services, all of the services that the residents of Fairfield deserve. The police service, everything.
Okay, all right, very good. How about you, Deborah? Anything else that you're concerned about? You know, because we want to talk about a wide variety of things, okay? And so we know we all have an issue with the garbage and we all have the same issue. But Fairfield has some other concerns as well. We got a couple of new businesses here in Fairfield. And speaking of businesses, I would like to ask you all, number one, what the city, what the citizens would like to see come here as far as businesses? And for Ms. Ms. Oden Jones, Oden Jones, how you feel you can be instrumental in getting those businesses here?
That was my question.
Okay, all right. So what's, so what's your question? What would you like to see come here, Deborah?
That was my question. How would she benefit us in trying to ascertain more businesses into the area?
Okay, let's, let's.
What's needed, because we need revenue. We need more revenue into the city. And the only way we can do that is to get more businesses.
Well, let me ask you this, Deborah. Let's, let's get really specific. Let's get really specific. As a citizen, what kind of businesses would you like to see that would serve you? Okay, if, are there anything, any businesses in particular that you believe will serve you as a citizen so that you don't have to go out by all of time?
Yes, but I don't think it's possible because the last council meeting I went to, I was told that because of the median income of the Fairfield is at like $28,000, $29,000 per year. And the fact that we had a lot of burglaries in the businesses that had to leave because of the burglaries. And there was one other issue. Let's see. There was the median income, the pilfering, and it was something else. But as I, but those things factor into why businesses like Publix perhaps would not come into our area. They look at, you know, businesses look at, they do feasibility studies.
Right, right, right.
They do these studies and they come up with these numbers. You know, they don't see any benefit of them coming into the city.
I understand, I understand.
So we can probably address that, those issues, going out and getting probably small businesses would be probably better for us right now. I don't know whether or not the median income is gonna increase because the neighborhood is getting older.
Okay, let's, let's let, let's let, do you prefer Oden Jones or just Jones?
Ms. Jones is fine.
Okay, let's let Ms. Jones, let's address that about what her approach would be to securing new businesses in the city.
My approach to bringing business in the city is, and I thought about this today, how can I bring business into the city? What would I do to bring business in the city? So what I came up with, and I did discuss it with someone else, I said, you know what? To bring business in the city, you got to show that people gonna support whatever you bring into the city. People got to, you know, we have to support it. And I was, as I was out campaigning, and I was telling the people, I said, yeah, we supposed to be getting the grocery store and I said, but we as citizens got to support it. We can't go outside and support other people's business when we have the same business in Fairfield. So one thing I kept saying is that we're gonna have to reinvent, we're gonna have to do something different to bring people into Fairfield. And or, I think that in order to get businesses to come, we got to show that we gonna support them. You know, we got to support them. We got, when, when, when businesses see that you're supporting them and that people are shopping at their stores or, you know, going to their stores or whatever, not taking things, I think they will come.
How do we show that? I mean, how do we show that before we get them?
Before we get them, like the ones that's here, we have to support them. So we have to, and then, like I said, we don't have to reinvent. So we have to, and then, like I said, we don't have to reinvent, we gotta think of ways to how we're gonna do the downtown area. We need to do something downtown to bring people into Fairfield. You have to, you got to offer something else. And what that something else is, I'm, I'm still working that, but we need to offer something else to bring the people into Fairfield. Because right now, the thing you got to offer is, you know, the gas station, you know, you won't have anything that no one else have. You know, we don't have anything different, in other words, but we need to have something, we need to come up with something that we could offer the people to come into Fairfield. And as they come into Fairfield, then we can have the business to come, but we got to get people into Fairfield to shop in Fairfield, do something, we got to do something.
Okay.
So right now.
Deborah, you got something you want, wanna interject?
Yes, when she spoke about, uh, when Ms. Jones spoke about the downtown area, the Gary Avenue area of Fairfield. I think it would be incumbent upon the councillors, the mayor, or whoever to find out the owners of those buildings and why they are in such disrepair. They should not be, they should not look the way they look in the downtown area on Gary Avenue. Now, I don't, I know that the owners are probably, you know, not of our persuasion, but they are holding those buildings there and they are not keeping them up. Now, if we can contact those owners, make them clean up those buildings and make them be more presentable, perhaps some more businesses will come along, uh, Gary Avenue. You know, the downtown area. But until we can find out who these owners are, just like in our neighborhoods right now, we're, we're getting a lot of rental properties. We need to know who these owners are, you know, so that we can contact them when things start failing and stop, you know? The upkeep of the homes are not, you know, up to par. So I think if we clean up the downtown area, the buildings are in such disrepair, I wouldn't wanna open a business there, you know, uh, all nice and fine, and right next door to me is all dilapidated.
Right. Well, I, I, I think, I think part of, uh, commercial, well, I'm not think, part of commercial real estate is when you look at a building that, um, you know, in, in some cases, uh, the tenant, the commercial tenant is, is responsible for, um, you know, the, the inside to make it conducive to their own business. Uh, they may negotiate things like make sure that the plumbing, heating, and proofing all, that is secure. But a lot of times, they're responsible for, uh, getting the inside prepared for how they, they want their, their business or the way they need it to operate. Okay, so I do that as far as.
Even the outside, I mean, owner will do.
Same thing, the same thing, the same thing. So, and I, and I do know that a, a lot of the properties downtown in Fairfield, some of the city homes, I think Archie Phillips' home, fifty percent of Fairfield, okay? So, and I understand, you know, when they were, when they were talking about, um, when Gaudi came here, I believe there was some discussion, discussion, and they had a meeting, uh, with Archie Phillips. Now, I don't know the extent of that, but since the discussion has started, I would say that that was a good.
That was a good start, yeah.
That was a good start. Now, they gotta start somewhere, wouldn't you agree?
That's right.
But you know, with Archie Phillips owning so much, there are some standards that I'm sure that's in play that, uh, he's not doing. I mean, as she said, the outside of the building, there's something you could do. I mean, I, I just feel like there's some kind of something that's in place, say, okay, this is required, that is required. And if it's not, then we need to see about doing something about that. We just can't let people just own business and, and, and don't keep it up. Or it's like you said, they, they falling down, they looking terrible, you know, I just, I feel like there's some sense of responsibility. Just like some of the houses that people are talking about that need to be repaired. If they need to be repaired, yours or whatever, the owner has a responsibility, some kind of responsibility to upkeep their property.
Yeah, they, they do.
I think we let them get away with too much.
They, they do. I'm, I'm gonna let Trinida in here. I've unmuted you, Trinida. Hang on. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a question. Do you think that we will ever get our own police department back? When I've been in Fairfield thirty-one, almost thirty-two years, my child came all the way through the school system from K-five through high school. Okay, those police officers that, that we had at their offices, they knew our kids, they knew our neighbors. We knew the police officers. I, I was, um, very active in PTA and Booster Club. We knew all the policemen, they knew our children, they knew the neighbors. Now we just get anybody, and it makes a big difference when you're close to your police department. It makes, uh, we, we all out of the childbearing age right now, I think we all are. It, it, it makes a difference. It really make, when your child is out there, somebody, a policeman pull up to him, they know who this cha- child is, they know who this child belong to. Because they've been with them since they've been in the school system. Now we just have, I know, I have no, no problem with Jeff's County Sheriff's Department. Um, I'm glad they came, but we need our own police force. It was so much better. We had, before it started going down, when we had our own police, we knew these policemen. At the football game, they were there. You knew them. Any basketball games, they were always there and present.
Okay.
Okay, and I agree, we do need our own police department, but being a police officer, Fairfield Police Department went down so bad. Um, they didn't have equipment, it was unsafe, it was just so many un-things that should have, they just didn't have what they need. And so with the, with the sheriff department stepping in, and I agree with you, the police officer should know, you know, you should get to know, well, and as a police officer, you know, you know who live here, who lived over there, you know this kid, which is good, you need to know that. You need someone as a police officer working in that area who's familiar with it. But I think as time, as the city grow, as the city grow, and I know, I, it's gonna grow. As the city grow, we'll get back there. But we got the, uh, right now, we, they just can't afford it. They can't afford it. They can't afford the equipment they need, and it was unsafe. Um, I had retired officers that I used to talk to, and I just, it was, it's, it was really unsafe for them. It was really unsafe, and it was really unsafe for us as a citizen. So to do what they did, I think that was good for now. But as soon as the city start growing back and businesses start coming, we start, we have the, uh, economy that we need to have our own police department, then yes, I can see, I can see it coming back. Because they hadn't dissolve, resolve, you know, we still have the police department. So it's not like we just don't have a police department. We do have some officers and we have the chief, and, you know, we do have those people in play. But it will come back.
I wanna, I wanna add on to that just a little bit because I know people are concerned about bringing the police department back. And, and we all want that, and I, I think that it eventually will come back. Uh, but I wanna talk about, uh, and you tapped on this a little bit, that Fairfield just doesn't have the money. And I, and I think that, um, you know, many people don't realize what kind of cost that really is. Not only are we talking about salary, we're talking about benefits. Uh, we're talking about, you know, uh, what they contribute to, uh, unemployment or life insurance and all of that. Vehicles, the maintenance of those vehicles, we need new vehicles. So it's, it, and, and it's the same thing with employees, and why don't you hire employees too? But why don't you hire employees to do certain things? Well, if we hired that employee, we gotta give them a sal, so you gotta give them a salary, you know, ten dollars. You know, their benefits might be another fifteen dollars, you know, then there's vacation, then they're sick and all of that, so it's really costly. And it's the same thing with employers hiring temp services. And they say, well, why don't you just, um, you know, hire yourself? Well, if the temp service pay fifteen dollars, uh, they're also paying any kind of benefits that they get, okay? So the fifteen dollars is still less than what the city might absorb. So I just wanted to, to, to mention that uh, and let you talk about that, uh, some more, if you had anything to add to that.
Yeah, um, and as you said, as you stated, it, well, it's just, the cost is overbearing for us right now. But I, I could see us coming back and having our own police department and being able to give the police, I mean, you don't want them out there.
Okay, so. They do have. Hang on one second. So the more you move around, your voice starts breaking up, so if we can, you know, try to, yeah, I'm gonna move too, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay, uh, and then, like I say, they was, they was unsafe. They didn't have the equipment and, and the vehicles and all that. Like I said, I did talk to them and, and my heart really went out for them. Because actually, I, by me being a police officer, someone tried to break in my house and I caught my own burglar. And he was on, uh, EJ Oliver Boulevard. So I fought, I, I jumped in my car, you know, I was playing police, but.
I think I remember.
I wouldn't expect no one else to do it.
Yeah, I, I think I remember that. Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Angela. So Angela, I'm gonna, I'm gonna unmute you, but if there's a lot of static, I'm gonna have to mute you again. Uh, mainly because we're gonna make this public and I don't want that to be a distraction. But we do have a chat box down here. If you look at the bottom of your screen and you click on the chat, then you can type it at the bottom right of your escape stream. So we're gonna try you first, okay? Okay, you are not unmuting. There's a, there's a delay in, okay, go ahead.
Okay, I understand, I agree with everything that you've been saying about.
Okay, so we, we had, we had to shut you off because there's, there's this terrible, terrible static. Can you type in your question? So if you go to the bottom of your screen with your mouse, you'll see where it says chat.
I think probably what you're hearing is my air conditioning, because I'm sitting right here by the bed. So that might be what you're hearing, but, uh, is that?
Yeah, but it's still a distraction, uh, and because it's public, um, I kinda, I kinda don't wanna have that. Um, are you able to type in your question or, or even text it to me? One of, one of, one of the other, because we wanna hear your question. Okay, uh, Trinida, you got another question? You know what? Okay, Deborah, how about you? You got a question, Deborah? Hang on, we're, we're unmuting you. Let me unmute you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. You got another question?
I don't have a, a, a question as much as probably as I do have comments.
Go ahead.
Comment, the comments or, or, could be, or, um, I think for us to move forward, the council and the councillors and the mayor will have to work together. They're going to have to come to agreements to move this city forward. They have done a pretty good job thus far. Councilor Carnes has kept us informed. He keeps us updated on the, uh, GroupMe, uh, network. Uh, they're doing what they can do. So as new council members who come in will probably have to follow suit until we can get the, uh, proper mechanisms, the resources, the funding in order for us to do the things that citizens want to have done. But there could probably be some things that can be corrected or corrected or, uh, possibly, uh, rearranged. But, uh, with a new person coming in, there's gonna be that learning, uh, curve. So it won't be that much that a new person can do until they catch up.
Learn the ropes.
That's right, until they catch up. Um, like I said, I'm pleased so far as to what has been going on in the city, the new things that are happening. I'm proud that we've come that far or this far. You know, we just need to continue in that vein. And, uh, I should say, Councilor Jones, I see now that you are a person who will not bite your tongue and that you will stand in your truth and will help the councillors and the mayor move forward. And thank you for this opportunity to speak.
I agree, I agree.
And, and let me just, let me just make a comment on, I know Sherita said, you know, you have to learn the ropes. But, and I, and I agree with you, you do have to learn ropes. But you know what? I'm so excited. I'm just ready to go to work. I'm just ready to do something because I've been, you know, and this, this is keeping it real. I was praying, I said, Lord, let me be the answer for Fairfield. And I had a, a group, I said, y'all pray, I wanna be the answer for Fairfield. Not that I'm making a name for myself, but I just know this is the opportunity. This is the time the Lord has opened up the door for me to be the answer for Fairfield. I'm so excited about getting in. And, okay, you say learn the ropes, but I'm just ready to get in and do something. I just think it's just something I could do, you know, with, with my mind and what I, what I, uh, like I said, I worked as a police, working with people for thirty years. I know it's something that I could do to help Fairfield. And not just me, you know, I'm not, I'm saying I, but to inject, you know, inject ideas. Let's try this. Okay, why can't we try this? Cause I can remember when I got promoted, you know, you couldn't tell that I was a new promoter. You know, you couldn't tell I was just a new person on the block, because I was like, how you do that? What's that right there? You know, I wanna know. I wanna know how you do this, what, what steps you get, get to, get over here. I'm just so excited about this opportunity. I am really excited about it. So it, yes, I will be new, but you wouldn't be able to tell it.
Well.
You won't be able to tell it, I promise that.
I can appreciate that. But, but let, so let me say this, and this is why I say that about learning the rope. Number one, uh, new council persons and someone who, uh, has not served in that capacity first, uh, going in, what I've observed is that you don't even know what the job is.
Right.
Okay, so going in, you have to find out what your job is because, you know, you're a politician now, okay? I don't care what you say, okay? You're a politician. And so, and so people say all the time, you know, don't play politics when you're a politician. Politician's what you do. Okay? Cause that's what you play, what you do. So, you know, that's, that's one thing. But you have to learn what the job is.
That's true.
People go in with the notion saying that I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, when, uh, the law that, that governs you may not permit you to do that. So when I say you have to learn the ropes, you do have to find out what your job is. Because I truly believe like to go in, they don't really know what it is, okay? That, that's really what I was saying, okay? But you're gonna go in and you're gonna be on fire, okay?
Ready.
Ready. But that's all I meant by that.
Okay, I got you. Thank you. That's what I was, that's what I was saying.
I have a, okay, I have a comment. She has a leg up. First of all, she comes from city government. She, she's very familiar with the rules and regulation of the personnel board. That's gonna help the city employees fare well, and they need some help with that. So that's a leg up. She's been working with people all her life. That's a leg up. You got this. Go with it, run with it. You got this.
I got this, thank you.
You need some rules, some, some rules and regulations. I know where to get them to, because I've worked for city municipality for thirty-one years too.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I, I wanted, um, Phyllis, uh, Trinida was, when I moved into, uh, this community in two thousand eight, Trinida was the, uh, Forest Hill Neighborhood President. Uh, then after that, uh, after she stepped down, um, I revived it, and then I was the next Forest Hills Neighborhood President. And now Cheryl Sommons, uh, is the president. So, you know, we are, we are all, and all of us here are involved in our communities. We're not bystanders. We played an, we played an active, uh, role. We let our voices be heard. Um, you know, so, you know, we're, we're not backing down to that, and we, we're very, we're very vocal, okay? And we're, we're, you can always communicate with, which brings me to the subject, um, you know, and I, and I've talked about this before. Uh, you know, when I was, when I was neighborhood president, I would go to the, uh, council meetings, uh, all the time. And one of my gripes were, you know, I wish people would come to council meeting, but even then I would say, you know, if everybody showed up, you couldn't get into this place. So what other, what other ways are you gonna be able to communicate with us? You know, besides council meeting, what are the other ways that you can communicate with us?
Yeah, and I thought about that too. And my idea was, I was thinking about newsletter. Then I thought about, well, you know, we do have GroupMe, and I will post things on GroupMe, you know, things. You know, things that I think you should know, because I want you to be informed. So if you can help me or help us, like I said, I want to reach out to all resources. I met a lady the other day, she worked with the school system. She said, "You know, I offered my assistance to Fairfield School, and they didn't accept it." I'm gonna reach out to... And the lady at the state, with the school board, I've talked to her. She said, "Whatever you need, just let me know." So I, you know, I'm just the type of person, I'll reach out to everybody, and I don't care who it is. If you can help me go from A to halfway to B, I'm gonna call, because there's no shame in my game. It's not about me, it's about getting the job done. So I'd reach out to everybody. Anybody, you know, that's why I say I would keep you informed. If I have to pick up the phone to call you, or put it on GroupMe, or whatever way I need to do to let you know what's going on, and if you can assist us or show me another way, because sometimes you may have a different idea, make me say something different. Hey, I'm willing to accept it. I don't, I don't, it's not, like I said, it's not about me, it's about the people.
Okay.
So...
All right, all right, very good. So, you know, we started this conversation at six o'clock, and certainly we can go on. You know, I think, you know, an hour is good, particularly since we're going to be posting it. But I did want a chance for, you know, I know you and I have seen or talked to each other a number of times, but I did want a chance to get everybody else together to ask you questions about what you want to say. I'm going to start with Trenita's, and your mic is off. Any final thoughts? Where's she gone?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry.
Final thoughts?
My phone rang, I'm unmuted. Anything I can do to help, I'm just a phone call away.
Thank you.
I'm good at a lot of stuff, so just use me.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah, I'm gonna unmute you. Go ahead, Deborah.
The same here, I am limited, but I can do, I can do some things, okay? And I'm here for you, like Trenita say, I'm right here. I'm a phone call away, or group me away, or inbox me away.
Okay.
Just let me...
I will.
Very good, very good. And Angela, I'm really sorry about your not being able to participate vocally, but it just would not come across, and it'd be very frustrating to hear over that. But in closing for myself, I want to say that I appreciate you all showing up and listening in and answering questions. And I want to thank Phyllis Oden Jones for participating. And, you know, this was not an interview, okay? This was nothing formal. And, you know, this, like, we like, hey, we like that show The Real, right? Okay, we just talking about some stuff, right? That's what we do. Or the talk, that's us, that's what we do, so I appreciate you. So, Phyllis, I'm gonna let you shut it down, and you got any final words that you want to say?
Excuse me, Sharita, is this better? Is this better?
A little bit, just a little bit. You got it.
Go ahead.
Okay, real quick, before she closes it out. But I just want her to know that, you know, if I can, whatever assistance that I can provide. But if you don't mind, if we could just break it down to District Five, what kind of change in District Five can we look forward to? One problem here is that U.S. Steel property is right behind our property, and the kudzu back there is just like overwhelming. And Sharita, I think the further down the street it goes, the, you know, the further way it gets from the backyards and stuff like that. But really, basically, what can we look forward to in District Five?
Okay.
District Five.
Thank you, Angela.
District Five, okay. Matt, you know, and I stated earlier that I did this, I wrote, well, the last couple of Sundays I've been riding over in the Forest Hill area, and I noticed that there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done. And my thought is, let's do one block at a time. Let's work at getting some of the trash, and I said mattress, I couldn't believe all the mattresses that I saw on the side of the road. And also the overgrown yards. We got to start one block at a time, doing one section at a time, and getting it done, and getting the people involved in reporting. When people throw trash out there, report it, tell somebody, whether you call me on my phone, text me, or say, "Hey, my neighbor's throwing trash out. My neighbor, the person across the street, they dumped this over here." But let somebody know. And it's not a big deal in letting them know, because if you don't let us know, we can't, we can't say, okay, we can find this person. Or we could do something, or send them a note, or either go by there, do something. We've got to do something. So just to continue to let us, things, you know, continue to happen, 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 and no one is addressing it, nobody's telling who's doing it, or not saying anything, those days got to be over.
Right.
If you care about where you live, then you got to speak up. That's just the bottom line to it. You got to speak up and say something. You see something, say something.
That's true, that's true. I do want to make a comment about the kudzu. I had, and you know, I've had to do this, it's been several years, and I haven't followed it myself, and then U.S. Steel shut down or whatever, but there's this gentleman at the time, well, Scott Gilbert, and I called him, you know, because of all that kudzu in the back. And he came out, he addressed it, they did spray, they'll do it up to the fence. That's as far as they go. But, you know, I had been contacted the city to see if there was something that they could do. And I don't know how I ended up getting in contact with him, but he came one day, he walked in my backyard, he looked, and he let me know what part U.S. Steel owned, and that they were spraying. Now, I think they did stop, and so, you know, we can definitely, you know, contact the city again and let them know that they need to be sprayed, or I'm gonna give you these owner, we can call ourselves, okay? But I do know, let me tell you this, you know, they cut all that back and back, like, you know, Alabama Power, I think it was. Remember Angela, when they went down and cut that back? Let me tell you what they did. I was like, oh yeah, they cut all that, they cut all that. You know, they start right at the edge of my property. They cut everybody's kudzu and stuff. The very end of my neighbor's property. Everybody was clean. On the side of my property to get the neighbor's stuff, it went straight on. I can't do not, I could not believe it. I could not believe it, honest to God, true. And they just skipped right over me. And I called them, and said, "Well, you know, whatever it was, it wasn't a part of, oh, it was, there wasn't interfering with any power lives." But I was just too outdone, that they just skipped right on over me.
You know, which that is good, because sometimes people don't know that they can call certain numbers to get stuff done. You know, sometimes we just want to complain about it, but not call the person who's in charge of it. That's why I say somebody owned that property, and just like you did, you called them, or either you...
You are still...
Oh, or something.
Yeah, you are still owns it. Seven eight three four four seven two, seven eight three two six nine five, seven five three four one five zero.
And they have responsibility to keep their property up, everybody does, if they own it.
Absolutely, absolutely, because it's really bad behind, I mean, it's just, it's horrible. And if you don't kill it, you know, it would just overtake everything, everything. All right then, did you get to your final words, Phyllis? Angela, was there anything else you want to try to get in? Because we know you've been missing a lot, and I really apologize for that, I really apologize.
I just want her to know that I'll be supportive. I mean, I've been working in the community a long time, and I'll be real supportive.
All right, very good. All right, we're with you, Phyllis Oden Jones.
Okay.
Deborah, I think Deborah has one more comment. We don't want to let you go.
It's fine.
Go ahead, Deborah.
In the past, there were forms that we filled out, and we presented them to the city manager for our enforcement, people parking in their yards or whatever violation, or, you know, not keeping up their property, not cutting the grass, or whatever. But I think that kind of fell through when the Sheriff's Department took over, because we don't have anybody to enforce. But they are forms that are on our webpage.
They have a website now. And so we had a website, and, you know, after I stopped being president, nobody was, you know, feeding it information, and so, you know, the domain, I think the domain name still exists. I'm perfectly willing, you know, to pay for it and get it back up, you know, and running, because that form was there. But I think Fairfield does have a website now, and I think there's a method on that website for reporting.
There is, there is, there is.
And the officers that's working...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, I was gonna say, I was gonna address that. But they do, and I said, they have officers that are working for Fairfield, and they're supposed to enforce those city ordinance. That's their job. So, yes, I didn't know about the form on the website, but yes, someone posted, well, officers are supposed to enforce those. And I have seen them putting stickers on cars and stuff like that. Sometimes you have to call them, but call down there, and that is their job to enforce those city ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had his name, I'm looking for it in my phone. Marsha, do you know the guy's name that we call when it's not an emergency? The resource officer that, you know, issues ordinance and things like that?
I used to know his name, Sharita, Sergeant...
Something.
Something, something, and, oh Lord. I thought about him today, as a matter of fact, I wanted to report some, they use a garbage dump right up here on Seminole Circle five six one, and I was thinking about his name today, because they usually go out on, they used to rather go out on Wednesday. So, why does it change? So I don't know.
Julius Hunter.
That's his Hunter, that's his name, Hunter.
He's the environmental officer, he's his first...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, they're supposed to be still, they're supposed to still do that.
Okay, well, the people will just download the form and fill it out, you know.
You might not even have to download it, you might even be able to fill it out online, online.
I had to download and make, I had to print it.
Okay.
Yeah. And you can also not use your name. You can just use, you know, Forest Hill Neighborhood Association as the reporting entity.
What's the website?
I will have to text it to you, text that to you. Herman put it in a text message or on one of the Facebook groups. So I'll have to find out, but you can Google Fairfield official website or something like that.
Okay, so it's not the county website, it's Fairfield's website. City of Fairfield.
It's a shell, but it's still better than what they have.
Right.
Okay, all right. Last word, Phyllis. Take us home.
My thing is that, and I keep saying, I said, "I'm willing to work with you." So I'm willing and I'm ready to work. Just give me a chance. I have the experience, I have the know-how. I just know that this is what I was called to do, this is something that I have the desire to do. I have a strong inner desire to do it. So I'm willing to, I'm ready, like I say, boots on the ground, and I hate, and I'm sorry for keep using police things, but that's who I am, but I'm ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to go, and I just need you to want it. But I'm willing to do it if you want it. And I just need everybody to help me, like I say, resources, whatever resources I can reach out to, come in. I'm willing to do it, you know, even with the citizens, as ones who just offer their services. And I will call you and say, "Hey, could you help me here? Do you know this? I will call you," because I can't do it by myself, I'm just one person. So we need everybody to want to make this a better place.
All right, very good. On a final note, Regina Hill is having an event for Mayor Penny and Phyllis Oden Jones on August twenty-second, from noon to two o'clock at her, you know, at her home. So we'll let you know more about that. I just finished doing the flyer today, and I've got to put some final touches on it, some things that she wanted me to do, or she asked me to do to help her. So we're gonna check out, I want to thank everybody for participating, it's been a pleasure. And we'll...
Thank you.
We'll see you on twenty-second, and then we'll see you at the poll. We are going to be, I believe, we're gonna vote at Forest Hills, okay? We vote at Mount Pilgrim when it comes time for us to vote for Joe Biden.
Okay, okay.
All right, very good. Now have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, hey, bye.